Mooresville, North Carolina. And one of the things that he said today in his presentation just rang home. And it should be our mantra. He said, "We have a moral imperative to prepare students for their future, not for our past." And I think too often we get caught up in, "This is how it happened for me," or, "This is what we've always done here, and that's what we need to do," rather than think about what's good for them for what's coming ahead of them. Because I literally have more. The other speaker said this yesterday, and it was brilliant. I said it the day before, so I'm gonna beat him. But this is more technology in my hand right now than the President of the United States had from everything he could gather 10 years ago. This is more information than he could have possibly gathered. And where do we ask our students to have this? Pop quiz.
In their backpack.
In their backpack, in their locker, in their pocket, can't take it out. Why would we take away technology that rather than thinking they're gonna destroy their lives if they use this thing? Because by the way, they spend on average seven and a half hours with digital media per day. Learned that today, too. Senior at Hockington informed us. Teach them how to use it as a tool for education. Teach them how to use the right way. Teach them how to use it to grow themselves in a lot of different ways. We have access to these things, and we really need to start focusing on it. It's these 21st century skills. This is the year 2014, I think still. Sometimes I get lost. We're 14 years into the 21st century. Have we started teaching these things? Have we focused on life and career skills? How do we prepare our kids for after high school, after AMSA? We need to talk about that. And we're gonna talk about that, because in some ways, we do a great job of it. And I don't wanna be Debbie Downer on this, but we do a great job in a lot of ways, but there's certainly a lot more that we need to improve on. You know, we think about the things that students need to learn. They need to learn how to creatively think, how to problem solve. We structure their lives so much that they don't have the ability to think for themselves too often anymore. If you think about when you were a kid, the rules were probably similar to what they were in my house. You went out of the house after you got back from school, and you had to be back by the time the lights went down, by the time it was dark out, streetlights came on. And you figured out how to play, right? You found people at the park, you played a game, and you made up the rules as you went along. And they were different for different kids, because some kids were a little bit better than others, so you'd have to make adjustments for those kids. We don't do that anymore. We say, "This is what you have to do, this is how you have to do it, and it's, these are the rules, and if you go outside of those rules, something must be wrong." We need to let our kids have unstructured learning, where they do something that they're interested in, and they wanna grow in, and get a deep dive and experience it, and learn more. Bring that joy back to their lives of learning. Every kindergartner has that.
Do you all plan to come back with a plan to begin to think about how AMSA changes to be?
We're talking about it a lot, so absolutely. Happy to.
I'm not trying to cut you off, Mike.
It's a long meeting.
We've got a lot of work that you really go through.
I'll try to be less long-winded.
That's all right.
So the other Cs here: communication, working as a team. As you well know, the ability to work in partnerships is really what any job is all about. If you can't work well with others, you're probably not gonna stay there too long. You need to be able to collaborate. I guess I just said that. It's pretty similar. And you need to have creativity, and that's one of those things we need to work on. Our information, media, and technology skills, definitely things that we need to grow at.
As a matter of fact, we're not even really on that board. We are so far behind most districts in this.
In technology?
Well, we're encouraging them not to use it. We encourage programming and computer technology in a computer classroom. Technology is not to be used anywhere else. I can guarantee you, every board member here has a smartphone that if it was taken away, they would be lost. So why are we not preparing our students to use this technology? It's not taboo. They know how to use it better than we do. It should be a tool, it should be a resource. Let's bring it to the forefront. Let's start having the conversations around one-to-ones, because it is proven that one-to-one technology is going to boost overall education and empower our students. You've heard that from them. They wanna be empowered. Why take away the very tool that they're gonna get in trouble for using in a school right now that's gonna empower their learning? Why are we doing that? Is it a rule? Maybe, but is it the right rule?
And like I said, we were at MasQ today and yesterday. The teachers who went along there with us had both great excitement for what they were learning and, at times, were hanging their heads. And from four different teachers, I heard, "I'm really ashamed of AMSA right now in that we're so far behind in technology." That we're going and talking to these great vendors, we're going to these great seminars to learn about these wonderful things that we can bring into the classroom and allow our students to experience. And the people ask us, "What device are your students using?" We don't have devices. "Aren't you the Advanced Math and Science Academy? We've heard of your school. You're a great school." Yeah, but we're so far behind. The school in North Carolina went from being one of the lowest-performing school districts to number one. They rolled out the one-to-one initiative seven years ago. It's North Carolina, I think we should beat them. And it's also one of the poorest districts. Out of the 115 districts in North Carolina, their funding is 110th. Fifty percent of their population is on free or reduced lunch, under the poverty line. They have the technology that our students, from an affluent community, at a school that embraces technology as the future, don't have. And that's just disappointing. So we need to get these Web 2.0 tools into our students' hands. Here's just 24 that I pulled off that are among the top, you know, that schools, that teachers and students use in the classroom. I'm not gonna go into these, one, because of shortage of time, two, because this is just a drop in the bucket of the thousands of wonderful things that we can bring into schools, and this is just a tool. Again, it's not every teacher needs to be using these things all the time. It's, some of these things are great ways for students to access their learning that we haven't done before, and a lot of them are free. You know, we talked to, I talked to a guy today, Paul Pashman, created a wonderful site, History in Motion, where you get to actually walk through historical events and take, like, basically a virtual tour. It's free. He built it out in his retirement, and he just wants people to use it. And he wants people to help develop other wonderful history things. Wouldn't it be great if our students got to use both their history and their computer science knowledge to help create these things with someone who's doing it and for others to use? We want to be able to bring these things to our students, but we need the technology in their hands in order to make these things happen.
Mike, I don't wanna cut you off, but I don't think that there's been anyone on the board who's ever been against any of this.
Me either. No, absolutely not.
So I'm not sure why you're telling us this, because we've been the ones who've actually been asking about this.
Because we need to make the conversation more proactive. We need to make it more about how are we gonna do, not, not, when, like, how are we gonna get the money? What are we gonna do? What are the things that we've built out? We need a strategic plan that sets these things down. And I know that that's something that the board will be doing very soon. You got your January meeting coming up. We're trying to say, as a team here, this is what we think is most important. Please consider it when you're talking about that, that this is really what's best for our students and where we need to go.
And to be clear, it's the one-to-one initiative of your end.
We need to get devices, yeah, we need devices in the hands of our students. And our teachers.
We need a strategic approach. You're not gonna go and buy a million dollars' worth of iPads or whatever and have a success. It's gotta be phased in. We have to have somebody who has done this before with infrastructure, with devices. And we gotta get these devices into the teachers' hands now to get them excited.
So they have time to play and learn and not, all right, all of a sudden, you have this and just don't do it.
It's a big initiative.
Yeah. So we're coming to a close here, so don't worry. I know, type of time. We also want our students to be global citizens, and that's one of those wonderful things that technology can open up to us. And in some ways, we have the technology now. Our eighth-grade teachers are talking about, you know, finding sister schools in other countries that they can have back-and-forth talks with in order to allow students more access to that sort of thing.
Yeah, so something, we are doing something right. So we're preparing students to college and beyond, and we believe we are preparing them well. They're successful in college, and you can read several quotes that praise our.
Beautiful creature is one of your quotes?
Yes.
Praise our teachers. So you can see that they praise not only knowledge, but study habits that with each down.
I was reading your own to bring a benefit.
Can you believe that?
So not everything we do is healthy. I'm kidding, of course. So we are inspiring our students, and we're preparing them, which is fantastic.
So with all that said, the students really do have the world in their hands, and how are we gonna move past the classroom? So in science, we're trying to put the advanced things on, get these kids out of the classroom. So I know I talked to the AI Committee last year about a research initiative. It is alive and well. We have students in it now, on a small-scale pilot program in five or six different areas. We have hydroponics, aquaponics, we have wildlife conservation, we have a sustainability slash molecular bio program, we have bioengineering, and then a geographic information system. These are actively, are, some are primary, some are duplicate research initiatives that we're involving students in. So they're reporting here during study hall, they're getting an independent study for their research, but they are doing legitimate scientific research. Some of our students will be presenting at a GIS conference in March, original research. Some of our students will be attending, like, an ACS conference or a molecular bio conference they have in Boston every year. But we're trying to get these kids out there, get them to see what science is. And I'm not talking about handpicking AP students. I don't want them. I want those students right in the middle who are disinterested in science. Give them an opportunity to come and get excited. And it's voluntary. They can leave at any time, and they're not gonna lose anything. They'll gain a study hall. But they didn't have to sacrifice a class. They look forward. We, this year, have been able, with the direction of Dr. Vimala, to be actually able to reach out to organizations like Water Fresh Farm, if you're from a local around here in Hockington. Our research students are working with them. They've got a problem with some mold, they've got a problem with some basic solutions they were cutting edge maybe 10 years ago, and he's grown his business in other ways, but now is looking to refresh his business. So we reached out, we're working with him. Mr. Valencourt, Mr. Brandis, and myself are working with NOFA, the Northeast Organic Farmers Association, and our students are gonna be testing their slope for heavy metal contamination there from all over New England. We met this contact a couple weeks ago in Marlborough at a green conference. And we feel like our students should be giving some of their skills and talents in computers and chemical analysis to nonprofits and see what they can do to help. And that information we are gonna have is gonna go directly back into our GIS database and will be able to map contamination and see if there is a problem. Well, Mr. Valencourt and I are also working with Salem State to write a joint grant to get an XRF, which we really, really like. We're also continuing our program with.
XRF?
X-ray diffraction, special photometer. Really quick way of doing instantaneous chemical analysis with X-rays. Yeah, so it's kinda nice. We're also continuing our efforts with SMOC. It is a little school next door, right in our white building. We thought we would kinda continue it with, repopulate with seventh graders as Ms. Tebow has been doing, but we found that last year, seventh graders don't wanna give it up, so this year's eighth graders are leading the charge and tutoring those kids up there and doing scientific experiments with them. So that was kinda nice. So 1080, which we alluded to earlier, we're national champions two years in a row. Instead of trying for a three-peat, what I've asked our team to do is to reach out to another school, an emerging school. So they're reaching out to Everett School District, an economically challenged district by 1080 standards. They're emerging. Their goal is to help elevate their placement, not ours, we're gonna do well, but their placement. They're skaping, they're meeting, they're involved in fundraising, they're using our contacts, our experience to boost their program.
It's a beautiful thing when our students can disseminate.
Exactly. And it's teaching them everything that we want them to have, good sportsmanship, giving back, and sharing, which we don't highlight that, it's pretty neat to. It's great that they've won two years in a row, but what else are we doing? And interesting to note that UMass Amherst has reached out to Mr. Brandis and myself about our sustainability program, because they want a graduate course, a graduate sustainability major, and they're asking for our input on how to design our course, because we've got one of the best sustainability classes going, and we really highlight a lot. And it's not widely known what we do. I mean, it's not just composting, it's composting 2.0. But we're trying, and we've got a lot more plans.
So we went through a lot of stuff here. Obviously, we also wanna work on our internships and our partnerships, and our partnerships are growing. Every time we're having conversations, we made a few just today. In fact, Tim and Chris were at, or who was at the conference? Tim and Chris, right? No?
Jeremy and Chris.
Jeremy and Chris?
Yeah.
Okay, so Jeremy and Chris were at a conference just today and met some people that they're gonna partner up with as well. So as our partnerships grow, so too can the internships for our students, getting them out and giving them some of these, some more of these experiences. And a collection of all these things is really what we want our students' experiences to be. So I realize that, one, this is a lot longer than you probably expected, and we were, a lot longer than we were told the time we could talk. But this is what we're passionate about. This is what, this is what we want our students to be able to experience, and, you know, we're passionate about giving them the education that they so rightly deserve in being our next leaders. And so I'm sure at times, our passion came off as a bit of a lecture, and I apologize for that if that was the case. It wasn't the intent. It was simply, we wanna emphasize how much we wanna change the conversation from focusing on standardized testing scores to actually the growth of our students and these opportunities that we wanna offer to them and for them to become, you know, these wonderful leaders in our world. Any questions?
I love that, right? I appreciate you guys coming as a team to really instill a different sense of values in the educational domain. That's a very different thing, so thanks for.
Thanks for having us.
What's your next steps?
To fulfill some of us, honestly.
We'll come back and talk about that another night. So I'm not expecting to hear you.
I just really wanna see, I'm excited about it, but I think we really need to say, we got this mission, what are the milestones along the way so we can get there and how can we help?
Some of it's already begun, like, some of the research stuff. Some things we're already doing really well, some things we think we need to improve upon a little bit, and a lot of things we need to learn. And that's one of those things that shouldn't be overlooked. We're asking our students to learn. Part of being a teacher is being a continual learner and always growing in your abilities and leading the way. AMSA Charter School is number one in a lot of ways. We wanna be number one in leading education. And in order to do that, it means that we need, we shouldn't be seven years behind a poor school district in North Carolina. We need to be ahead of the curve in defining what the next generation of education looks like. So that's really what our goal is. Got a lot to do to get there.
I didn't plan, I didn't mean, I'm trying to say that, I think that, from my perspective, the board has always been there, and we wanted to discuss it ourselves.
I know how I come off sometimes, especially when I'm passionate, so I feel like I could easily jump on that platform. I just wanted to make sure that you didn't feel that way. Or if you did, I apologize for it, so that's all.
There's also signs for the Shooting Stars program that the 11th graders are running with the SMOC and while they're being a dream.
All right.
My own question, has this been, has this been shared with the faculty? Have you engaged them to get that? Because, you know, we wanna be passionate, but the people that need to be passionate are the people in the school, so they're doing the same things, and they wanna find different ideas. Or what's the next step for that?
So, yeah, so we're starting the conversations, and their mission tonight was to drop breadcrumbs, and they, as I'm starting to tell them earlier right before the meeting, it's more like giant loaves of breads. But, so the conversation went further, but I, but I, you know, you don't wanna hold it back, right? Because the thing is, is that people are wanting to change the conversation, and the teachers are getting excited. If you could've seen the faces over the last two days, you would know, but I'm sure you heard it in their, in their voices. And others who've come in and, you know, when, watching, what, about 10 kids, 12 kids doing their research presentations the other day, it's happening throughout. So the conversations are happening in all different little arenas throughout the school. So there will be more to follow, including opportunities for presentations to the board, to, you know, for anybody else to come, specific to the topics. And we're hoping that by us starting some of these conversations, that when it's time for the strategic plan to start firming up a little bit more, at least as a faculty, right, as staff internally, we'll know what direction and what our feelings are. So we'll be working on those things in the coming months during our professional development and our time together, so that we start to form our vision, what we think, along with, you know, getting the public to start thinking differently. And that's why some of, like, the videos, we wanna engage others in the conversation. I wanna thank them, because they've worked really hard, and we've talked since I came about modeling, you know, Ms. Lebowski and Mr. Jade, but I know Lebowski potentially has been working hard at Learning Prezi to model for students what it's like to learn new aspects of technology. So thank you, guys, you did great.
Before we proceed, I just wanna take a time check. It's about 9:15. We probably have 45 minutes worth of material here. So the question I have for the board is, are there things that we think can be delayed and we should move to next week, to next month?
Oh, I think we can find something.
Or should we just try to plow through at a high level on some of these things? I do think that the task force for Culture and Management practice, I would like to certainly talk about, that's not gonna be sacrificed, but, you know, the chair business, I'd be happy to kinda sacrifice all that unless people.
I think we just go, we can't. I think maybe, I think we could just go, go quickly.
Okay. A lightning round is what we're gonna.
Well, no, we got to give them the proper attention. I don't know if they, well, they're totally, you don't have, finance is gonna be boring.
All right.
Finance is done.
Finance is done.
And not as boring.
All right, let's, Roger has overruled me. Let's go through chair business very quickly. There are two formal complaints.
That's right, did, didn't, the time is. No, it was just some update things to try to let people know what's going on. We can do that next time, don't worry.
Sorry, I didn't.
No, we're good.
So there are two formal complaints in front of the board, and they're ongoing. One, I will give you an update on, and another, Roger, will give you an update on. The one that I'm leading is by an employee who has alleged that there was, I guess it was discriminatory practices and unhealthy.
Unhealthy work environment.
Unhealthy work environment.
Major to the year.
That's ongoing. We've talked to the complainant, and we'll talk to him again. I think we're gonna be ready to bring back final recommendations on this complaint. We think a lot of it's tied up in what is going on with our Culture and Management Practices recommendations, and the complaint was alleged against a former employee. So it's gonna be difficult to investigate some aspects of it, but we do wanna move forward and we think we'll resolve it by next month. So that's my update on complaint number one.
Complaint number two is regarding lawful termination. We are, we have had our initial conference with the complainant. At this point, we are putting the complaint on hold due to pending legal litigation, and the complaint will stay on hold until the pending litigation is resolved.
And so there's nothing more we can do with this until lawsuits are completed.
Correct.
Craig, do you hope to have yours updated by the next, finalized by the next board meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
In regards to complaint number one?
Yeah.
Complaint number two is.
Is on hold, and they're likely to.
It's simmering.
So our next item is the collective bargaining task force update. Tom, can you give the update on that?
We met for the second time with the teachers and the teachers last night. Now, we're scheduled to meet again, however.
And are, those are closed sessions?
Yes.
Okay. With identified teacher group and then the board task force and legal representation on both sides?
On both sides, yes.
Okay. And so are we not gonna hear much about that in public session in terms of what's going on?
That would be our intent.
Okay, because that's a protected conversation due to the legal readers.
The ground rules were agreed to, we, that we'd keep what was going on in the room, in the room.
Okay.
So that was not a ground rule, that was agreed to, that was a direction that was agreed still.
Okay.
So we are hopeful that neither side would reach that.
Okay.
We're certainly not gonna be the first ones to reach that.
Okay, all right. And the next item is the recruiting task force for the executive director. And what we want to do is make assignments now so that the task force could create a process for this. I'm asking that three members be assigned to lead the process, and that would be Allison and Scott and Roger. So.
Sure, you get put on task forces.
That's the lesson learned, yeah. If you're not here, you'll be on a new task force by the time you come back. And I think Scott has a background, he really helped us this summer and was a great contributor. Allison, from the perspective, and Roger, from, I think, the continuity longevity of the board as well. So we'll begin to make progress on the ED recruiting task force. We have a scheduled quarterly check-in on annual goals. Tom, can you project that? And really, what we just wanna do is have the boards refresh themselves on our annual goals that we established about nine months ago and talk through how we're doing.
For the ED task force, can we ask for an update at the next meeting in terms of process?
Yes, yes. Process may include recruitment of additional members. I don't think that would be done by the next meeting, but it may be starting. So we have five goals that we identified last year at our January meeting that we just really wanna take a checkpoint on tonight. We've been doing this quarterly to figure out where we are and if there's other things we need to do with the remainder of the year to try to make additional progress. So the first one was increased transparency and visibility. I feel like we've made some progress here.
So, you know, I think this particular area was brought up in some of the deep dive sessions.
Yeah.
We can talk about it more later, but I think, you know, we have one of their, one item up there in terms of board attendance, it's 75% of the events, I think 75% of events, so that there's more interaction. But I think we probably want to do something in addition to that to help with the opportunity for both teachers and parents to interact in kind of an open forum with board members, because the BOT meetings, you know, it's just.
So you're a forum, a specific forum for interaction?
Yeah.
So we'll talk about that a little bit.
And I think that'll probably fold into this goal.
Can you, the B, can you go back? The B, parent and faculty reps will present a board overview to their constituencies at the start of the school year. Is that something I was supposed to do? I wasn't here in January when you did these goals.
It's just, this is what the board does, this is my role on the board, this is how.
There is, there's a big education component here that we identified. Everybody asks the question every year, what does the board do? And I think it's.
Oh, yeah, she had the whole presentation.
So it's a bit of an education and outreach to say, this is what we think the board does. So it.
But that hasn't happened.
Of course. And so if you can think about when you might be able to do that in a faculty setting, I think that would be great.
I hope that if we're able to get this bot update from the representatives, that will also serve as board overview and transparency at our part and communicating with our stakeholders.
Any other comments on number one?
Well, C and D, we have done it through the end of last year, and I just realized that I received a list of events for the coming school year, and I never circulated that to the board. So I need to circulate that so everyone can know.
And do we know where our score is so far?
No, we were gonna measure at the next meeting, 'cause we figured that was.
In January.
We don't have an interim score. We don't have an interim score.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have a interim score. But I would say, I think based on what I recall through the last school year, we were there at almost 100% of the time as well.
And so for 1A, I think it's something that we can, you know, we need to work on.
That's a work, that's a work in progress.
I think that publishing the climate report on the website went a long way towards that.
Yeah.
Good job, board.
So committee effectiveness. I feel like there's been a lot of great leadership here, that our standing committees are really conforming with policies, publishing minutes and announcing meetings more regularly. I'm not sure that we have minutes or records...
Two B is the same, is very much parallel to one A.
We're recording them more effectively, it feels like?
Yeah.
Now our next step is to publish.
Challenges to publish, get them published on the website.
Okay. And then, three, strategic planning. We did identify five strategic issues, April, May, I believe.
March, that's in March.
Started that and completed in March. We haven't kicked off the task force with any meaningful action due to other circumstances. And we've got a little bit of an update on that this evening here in a few minutes to try to move that forward a bit.
But we did create a task force.
We did create it, but we're not...
We just haven't moved it.
Which immediately got busy with other meetings. So with board development, we did add two new board members by the June meeting. Our goal is to reach, to bring on a few more by the end of the year, which we're on track to do. We specifically made a decision not to do the board development workshop on governance versus operational issues, given the changes that we had and the faculty staff and parents were meeting, and also that we are in the process of bringing on two new board members, hopefully two candidates for governance. So we can do those last two towards the end of the year.
Do we have plans, I think we have a member to do?
Yeah.
To do that.
Okay. And number five was long-range financial planning. No, no significant action.
This is really, this is actually a check-in.
It's really a check-in.
Yeah, and this one is, it's associated Jones' goals versus what Dr. Mello's goals.
Yeah.
So I, I don't know if we've ever circled back with her...
With Dr. Mello.
For number six?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I, I would agree. She's been busy.
Yeah. I don't think she's, I don't know if she's aware of this goal that we...
Right.
No, I, I, truthfully, on my list...
We're at strike for word, change in demographics.
On my list, I have five.
Educate all students.
Oh, no, no, they didn't have that one.
Okay. All right, any other comments, board? I think, you know, good progress on a lot of things. We didn't get a percent score, but there's been a lot of movement. All right, shall we proceed? Our next and last item in Chair Business, or actually, we have two more items, is a strategic planning discussion. And I do want to make this brief. Pauline and Chris and I got together and talked about how can we move strategic planning forward? What we, what we, what we discussed was that, you know, I think we've been busy the one, and so we haven't made progress, truthfully. What we'd like to do, though, is, we think that we want to try to reset this for a good set of analysis by the board of the charter as a starting point. So, we're going to assign some homework to board members in the next few weeks to take some actions, to study the charter a bit. And we want to then come back in January and prepare to think about, you know, a strategic plan that contemplates what the charter says versus what the school is doing as well. We know we're in a charter renewal period, so there's not a question of changing the charter, but we want to be able to reflect on the charter to make sure that as we begin to strategic plan, we have that firmly in mind. So there'll be homework forthcoming, unfortunately or fortunately, however we...
And I'd like to thank Dr. D'Amelio and the faculty who presented today, and the students as well, because what we want to do is be looking deeply at the charter and really setting, you know, asking the big questions. And so, it was nice practice to ask them the big questions that we got tonight.
Yeah, it does, you're right. And we have a, we have a contract to approve, is that right, Roger?
Yeah. We could do it in governance.
Okay, that's fine. So that was it for the Chair's Business. We could move right on to the most important topic of the night, the task force on cultural management practices. So I'll turn it over to Rick.
Okay, great, thanks. So, so just to, maybe, tell me if you mind moving to the next slide. So just to give some context to everybody, I'm just going to give a big picture overview and then we'll dive deeper into things. So, back in spring, we started doing a climate assessment. We brought in third-party, did the assessments, had a summary review of recommendations at the last board meeting. Since then, we had two deep dive sessions, one with employees, one with parents. We'll share some high-level summary of those recommendations, and we will make those available on the website. And we'll dive into those in a moment, but that, getting those recommendations in place basically completes the assessment process. And the next step is really to effectively dissolve the assessment task force and create an implementation task force. And the, and the goals of that task force, one, would be to really prioritize the issues that we found and the recommendations, determine who owns them, is it administration, is it board, is it a combination? Because I think there are a fair number that are in fact a combination or somebody else. And then, basically, divide, conquer, start implementing. But also, more importantly, that, that task force needs to figure out a mechanism to make sure there's accountability and feedback in the process of actual issue resolution. So some issues, we're just not going to handle or tackle or recommend, if not. And if we don't, we need to be clear as to why. I think one of the constant themes in all the feedback and recommendations we've got is transparency. So, and in that sphere, we need to be very transparent about how we're going to be handling...
Say what we're not going to do and say what we're going to do.
Going to do and when we're going to do it and make a commitment and who's the owner and so forth. And, and overall, you know, track and communicate process progress. One thing I will mention about this also is the, the assumption is the implementation task force is not necessarily going to be doing all the work. They may delegate things, if it's board issued to various committees, if it's administration to, in this way, administration sees fit to get things handled. So that's at, at a big level. The context, what kind of procedurally we want to talk about it, at the conclusion of this is, you know, how do we now set up that new task force? Basically, who's going to be in it and how do we get it started and kicked off? Because we need to start moving on that. Next page, please. So in terms of recommendations, we had the sessions last week, I had two of them. And just FYI, Diana Hammer was present, we had a third-party facilitator present, administration was present. Depending on the meeting, there were some board members present. And for the first session, we had it with employees. They had a chance to ask questions and give recommendations that weren't covered in the original summary report. And we'll go through some of those. And administration was present for part of the meeting and then not part of the meeting, and not present for part of the meeting also, so that people, if they felt more open, giving certain types of recommendations, they could, more anonymously, so to speak. And then we did the same sort of thing with the parents that evening. Administration was present for part of the meeting and then not present for another part of the meeting. I will say, though, that I believe it was in both meetings, the fact that folks did ask that there be a follow-up similar session or a forum like that, where they'd like to meet with, for example, the ED one-on-one, with the ED present, not necessarily the rest of the administration, but just the ED present, to share and have an open forum of discussion.
Was there a sense that you thought that people felt that these were effective sessions?
So, I, a series of folks did come up to me afterwards...
Yeah.
And responded positively to them. And I've heard from others indirectly, positive feedback.
Yeah, yeah.
I think, Jess, you may...
Yeah, I've had positive feedback from the faculty who attended. The only negative thing I would say is that some faculty members would have preferred it happen during a faculty meeting time because other people had other commitments.
Oh, yeah.
And so, they couldn't attend, so fewer people came, I think, than wanted to.
Though I think the, hopefully, one thing that did come out of the meeting was that there's value in having some sort of forum where we can have open dialogue like this. And so, you know, in future sessions, hopefully, we can do it time-wise and, and whatever may be appropriate to make sure the right, there can be greater attendance. Actually, I'll just mention one thing, if you go, go back to the previous slide, and I'm trying to be sensitive to time, but when Diana Hammer presented her recommendations, she had 35, most were for the administration. One was for board, one was kind of a combination. It's interesting, when we had the employee and parent sessions, there were certainly items for the administration, but there, there were more board items. I think a lot of that had to do with, folks didn't really understand the role of the board or don't necessarily understand the responsibilities of the board. And so, in some cases, people are recommending the board does certain things that maybe it's not the board's business to do officially. In other cases, I think we as a board may need to flex a little bit, considering the current climate. I understand in a conventional board meeting, you know, you've got public comment, but you don't have two-way dialogue. Folks want a mechanism to have two-way dialogue, to at least share concerns, issues. It may not necessarily be the share, I think it's, it's a matter of just more, a more collaborative environment and a more community environment and, and not so isolated and where, where communication is kind of hampered.
Yeah.
I think one thing, and Chris, I know we talked about this offline, you, you've really got the feedback, I think in both sessions, that folks feel like, okay, I can make public comments, nobody comments on it. Or if you make a comment, we can't comment on it. And sometimes we just want to have some dialogue on issues.
Yeah.
Okay. If you don't mind going to the next slide.
I think we probably, you know, we need to look for some models for that type of dialogue.
Yeah.
Whether that's regular, some part of a regular board meeting or whether that's some other type of forum.
Yeah. And I, I know kind of offline, it may have been during one or both of those meetings, we talked about, you know, something even like an open forum where maybe once a month or once, every, some period of time, it's, it's, you know, essentially like a roundtable or whatever. There's, there's open dialogue. So, path to improvement. So, one, one thing that came up in the employee session, I think, also to some extent in the parent session, was this notion that, okay, the, the summary reports have come out, or the, the assessment reports have come out, and, and I think, Jess, you spoke to this a little bit in your intro also, that folks, on the one hand, don't necessarily feel there's been a full acknowledgement that, you know, there were issues and potential, and, and people were bringing up issues, and some folks felt like their comments were marginalized or minimized. That's a perception, true or false? It is a perception and it's, it was pretty, you know, a pretty vocal perception out there. And then, and then beyond that, even the feeling that folks feel, okay, we've got new, we're moving in a direction with new, you know, a new ED and eventually a new principal, but, and folks are ready to start moving forward, but there is a, there's a, there's time to take, for healing and trust to be built up. And there needs to be an acknowledgement at kind of an emotional level that things were tough, things were really tough. And so, they, they feel like that's glossed over. I, I don't know, Jess, I will give you an opportunity, if you want to share anything, I don't want to mischaracterize it or whatever, but if, if you'd like to share anything from that perspective.
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Okay, maybe if I, I just want to make sure I'm not cutting it short or I'm not giving it the right attention.
The only thing I would say in the, in the parent session, I think the parents also voiced that they feel, you know, we've done this climate survey for the faculty, but the parents were hurting as well.
Yeah.
And is there, is the board looking at something similar for parents?
Yep, absolutely. And that comes up a little later, but that is right.
Or something, the third part, I guess, maybe if you brought, you're going to bring it up later, it's just one of the things that I remember.
Parents being perceived as a problem.
I'm sorry?
You talk about parents being perceived as a problem.
Yeah, or actually the fact, specifically about that parents saw this opportunity for qualitative, not just quantitative surveys, but qualitative interviews done with teachers to get their perspective, what about the parents?
What you said with teachers, did you mean with parents?
Analogously for parents.
Okay, that's correct, okay.
I think, Rick, if I could add, I think the faculty is also feeling like there's a sense like this happened and now we're new. And for a lot of faculty members, this is a continuing thing, it's not just that it's gone. For instance, there was a newspaper article that talked about the release of the climate report and Craig, you had made some comments, and I don't know when you made those comments, but one of the things was like, oh, there's, there's a lot of noise. And, and somehow that hit faculty members, they're like, what does, what does he mean? You know what I mean? And like, that kind of thing, but it's like, we're like, we want to be past where the board is minimizing it, and, and they took that as very minimizing.
And, you know, I...
Hardly get a good quote out of a newspaper.
Yeah, I hear you.
Yeah. So...
Why don't we, before we move on, and this goes off the slide, I'll, I'll make a bit of a statement, because I think, you know, I, I think myself, I'll speak as the board chair and as a person, and maybe I'm speaking for the board as well, but, you know, I do think that the board recognizes how painful it was last year for the faculty, for parents, for some of the students maybe, for the administration, and really feels terrible about that. And you can relay that to the faculty and the parents who are here, and they want to relay that, you know, it was an unmitigated mess for months, and it was, it had to be very, very stressful for everybody working in school. And, you know, apologize for my part of that specifically. You kind of try to rewind and figure out what you could do differently, I don't think it really helps. What we're trying to do here is figure out how we can act on recommendations so that systematically it doesn't happen again. There's lots of things, you know, so when we say it doesn't happen again, we act like it's not happening today. What we do want to do is make sure that we have, as a board, the safeguards in place so it can't happen. And a lot of that's communication mechanisms, so we, we're understanding what's going on. But there's, there's things that are raw and painful, as people say, and haven't yet been fixed, so there's fixing to do as well. And I think, I hope that that's what we, we're getting in the implementation task force, right? So now we've assessed, there's a very long list of recommendations that could take us years to work for, but the implementation team needs to figure out what are most important things to begin to work on. So, by no means, I think, the board, anybody on the board feels like we're beyond this. It's going to take some time and some fixing and some safeguarding as well. So, I'll, I'll acknowledge my part in what is around there for the last six months or so, maybe it was two years or three years, I don't know. And we missed some very important signals that we'll, we'll try to put some safeguards, so we don't miss them in the future. But I think there's, there's no lack of understanding on the board's part that this was painful for a lot of people, and that we have to be a part of the solution. And we were somehow part of the problem as well. I'm happy to kind of make that statement to parents and faculty groups, if they want to come and call me and ask me if I feel that way, I'm happy to repeat that. But I don't think the board has ever taken any of this lightly, nor said, it's in the past, let's keep moving, we've got a budget to prioritize.
I, I thank you for that, Craig.
Yeah, well, I mean...
Genuinely.
Yeah.
And I will pass that on.
Yeah, I mean, I, we, we all may have different opinions of what happened, right? Everybody on the board and every parent and every faculty member. We may continue to have differences of opinions of what happened. But I don't think that anybody has a real difference of opinions, that there are issues to be worked out still, and that there are safeguards to be put in place and mechanisms to be put in place that these things don't happen again after they're fixed. So, unfortunately, we have a lot of work to do.
And I, I think, to, to sum that point, I mean, and there will be, it'll take time to build trust, it'll take time for people to heal and, and, but hopefully, we can, we can work... trust, it'll take time for people to heal and, but hopefully, we can, we can work collectively on a lot of these things over the future and collaborate more among admin, the board, faculty, parents, students, and so forth to go on the right track.
One thing that the parents said, and I was, I was, I was the second session and not the first, and I was very struck by the amount of emotional energy that remained.
There was a lot of parents there?
Yeah, it was, it was pretty well attended.
It's not the energy, I think, that was really indicative of the problem.
Yeah, and the emotional energy was really very, was very high. And I didn't, I appreciated it in a way differently after that than I did before, and I thought I appreciated it going in, but I appreciate a lot more coming out. Couple of things that they said was that unlike, they compared to a time in a good old days when parents were treated as partners and now they felt they were managed as problems. And that's almost a quote, it's paraphrased, listen to this. That was something that came up very strongly. Another remark that was made going a little bit to what Rick was saying about a forum is at least one parent with a lot of naughty heads talked about what an immersive experience attending this meeting and speaking at this.
What, what is this?
What an immersive experience coming to the meeting.
Somebody wants to go and do public comment.
Is that it's quasi-adversarial, that you stand there kind of all by yourself, you talk, nothing comes back.
Yeah.
And so, you know, and like you said, Craig, you got to find, you know, there are models for it, that we do need to-
Yeah, I don't know what the model is, but there's got to be some success stories out there.
There's a thing there that we can fix, that we really need to, because it really, it was just very, very striking how much people felt-
Public comments not that useful.
And it's the only way they feel like to talk, so that's what-
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we should be able to talk to administration. I mean, I think that hurts, that concern here is that there aren't the forums, and the people felt like they had to come to public, you know, to the board to be able to raise issues, but it's not actually the board's role to fix the climate. It is the board's role to ensure that the administration is fixing the climate.
I think that's true, but-
And so, that's, that's a little bit where the difficulty lies, right?
Yes, yeah, it's where the difficulty lies. But what we created inadvertently was the, someone, someone else in the group said, you have to listen, you have to hear the noise.
Right.
You know, and when we said, it's not our job, and what they experienced was just this.
Yeah.
And that's not okay. You know, and we're at the situation in God's point, and so we need to, and I fully appreciate how difficult it is, I crossed the line at least three times tonight about, you know, what's management and what's governance. And so, I think we do have to be forgiving of each other as we figure that out and open to finding the right balance.
Yeah. So, to that point, you know, the earlier slide with the goals, right, we talk about, we want to make sure board members are present and visible at events. Why? Is it a role, is it a real role of the board? No.
It's trust, right?
It's a matter of trust, it's a matter of building that community, it's a matter of exchanging information, it's a matter of knowing what's going on and having some additional forum, I think, to do that, whether it's a roundtable once a month or whatever it may be, probably would be a vehicle to help with that too. And in fact, I think we could go a lot further, certainly we should be prison at those, but I think it wouldn't even go a lot further. So, if you wouldn't mind, on the next slide. Another, just kind of, I think some folks said it, you know, having an overall environment, a more mutual respect and communication, especially, again, feedback from teachers or employees, feedback from parents, a lot of folks just felt their comments were minimized. They weren't being paid attention to, and they weren't being taken seriously as stakeholders. And I think we need to be really cognizant of that in whatever we do going forward, that we're all stakeholders. And another comment that was said, I think, very heavily in the employee session, but also in the parent one, was we really need to be sensitive in our communications, especially in the current climate where there isn't full trust, that things can be taken multiple ways, and they can be taken as we're not being sensitive or taking things as seriously as they should be. So, that's another thing. In terms of other, just major themes, again, there were so many, but I'm just highlighting a few. I apologize to folks who may be here who may have said certain things. We have all of the recommendations there, we're going to address them all, but some of the main things, communication, more sharing and communication of major items, especially around personnel changes. Now, that's tricky, as you mentioned, Dr. D'Amelio, but where we do have new folks coming on, where that can be shared, et cetera. People gave the example of the status of the principal search, there were, there just, there's something so important, but they felt they weren't being kept up to date. I think one person mentioned in one of the sessions, you know, I get more alerts about lunch or this or that or the other thing, but not the major big things. And well, how do we make, how do we make that happen? There was a general comment, I think repeatedly in the teacher session, the ED should have more input directly from teachers somehow, not just have input from other administrators. And again, I think part of that played into like, just like there are forums that should be established with the board and teachers or parents potentially with the ED and teachers, or having some sort of teacher reps that can come to and present directly to the ED common concerns of teachers. Would that be accurate?
Yeah. Is that instead of the principal, like, a just, or, I guess that's what it was?
I don't think we even, I mean, we don't-
It wasn't, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, we were really talking about now, so.
No, okay.
There's no press.
We really did get into hypotheticals.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry.
I think there was a great distrust of intermediaries.
Yeah.
All around.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so, it was everybody, and so they want direct, you know, direct, direct contact with Mary Ann and not, you know, her administrative surround them. Or that's nothing but wanting direct to the board, not the executive director telling us what he or she thinks they said. And so, there's just a high level of distrust, any filters that could be blocking or distorting what they're trying to say.
Another general area, I mentioned this before, is there is clearly folks who do not understand the role of the BOT. And so, I think even on the website, I went up on the website, and even though we have quite a bit up there, I think something like even an FAQ type of thing.
Yeah, fair.
Q and A, just saying, does the BOT handle this, or who handles this, to just make it really very clear and tangible in terms of our role.
Whatever we do for our management versus governance for development should be manufactured so that it can go right on there.
Yeah, yes.
I mean, why, we shouldn't, we should do something that we can use for both.
I like the FAQ format. In addition to that, I think a lot of people, a lot of people think much, can look at the concrete ones much easier than we do governance and administration does management. But if you put down specific questions, who hires the principal? The ED hires the principal.
Right, right, we have no set.
Who hires the ED? The board hires the ED.
Who reviews, that's what I'm asking.
If we did a combination, parts will solve for different people who think differently, communicate differently.
And like you said, who do I go with, this is my issue, who do I go with for this particular issue? That, I think, would be helpful as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
That'd be helpful.
Yeah.
Even along those lines, you know, how do you get, how is somebody to become a board member? If people don't get it, they were saying, can we have parents elect board members? And there are laws around how you, you know, having a self-appointed board, right? All that, so getting clarity around that. Another, just general area, over and over in terms of many recommendations, really boil down to greater transparency, whether it's financials or decisions or progress on initiatives, more transparency. And I think we got to figure out how to do that effectively, because you don't want to spam everybody with stuff and so forth, and too much information can actually, you know, so there's something, we've got to figure out how to make that happen. And I think part of that goes back to, you know, when you have, we have the forums even, getting feedback on what will really work and what won't work and what do people really want. Another item was faster turnaround, this specifically in the court, faster turnaround for issue resolution. So with the laws changing, we have more time to resolve issues that are brought to the board, however, I think one parent made a very-
More specific to the complaint process?
Yeah, I'm sorry, thank you.
That we have prior to a formal complaint, they have, there's that, there's that staff that they meet, that they talk to the governance chair, and that was really, I think, driven by, a lot of the, a lot of the complaints were really not board-related, and they were going back, so really just to have an opportunity to talk through it and understand. When we talked about this last year, that was one, that was the specific example that was given, was that we kind of created a longer, you know, process to go to the complaint. But I think we've actually, they can go directly if it's, if it's within the, what?
It's an optional.
Yeah, it's optional.
It's an optional process. I think, I think it's, it goes back to transparency and communication. Maybe, I think it's a misunderstanding, and really like, that's why we've worked really hard on, and if we can continue to improve it, explain why that's there, to get high-quality, addressable complaints coming to the board. So clearly, we have more work to do.
Yeah. I think one piece of that was also somebody was sharing, well, you know, their perception of the process was, well, I got to go through all these steps, and now I'm already exhausted, and now finally I bring the complaint to the board, and now it's still going to take a long period of time to get it resolved. And then on top of that, the board has a longer period of time now to resolve the issue. Boy, it really is exhausting as a person who has an issue to get something resolved, or complaint to get something resolved.
And it's not, I'm exhausted and I'm embarrassed and I feel attacked, and again, all the emotional baggage was remarkable.
And I, I was getting the sense too from teachers that that 45 days, like, even within that 45 days, the only thing you need to do is say, we have the complaint, we'll update you, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Like, there was no, it felt like there was no, when do you have to have it done by, you know, like that process.
But that hasn't, I mean, it went from 30 to 45 days, but when you have to have it done has never been mandated. That has not changed, it's just that the state had, right?
No, it's never been mandated. In fact, the state made it longer because they realized that for most people are, don't understand what boards do, and they're bringing the wrong complaints, and that's why it's actually, they made it longer to help boards address those issues.
Is there a formal complaint process where if I have an issue and it's not a board issue, whose issue is it and how do I, is there a formal way that that can be made?
Board issue, it's a school issue.
A school issue?
I think that's what, that's part of our complaint process, is that when the person
comes with a possible board complaint, the governor's chair works through them, explains what a public process works, and would help to identify those complaints that you're asking for a, something that's clearly not within the board's realm.
I mean, the wrongful termination complaint is a good example, it's actually something that's not in board's-
So, I guess my question is, if I come to the board with a complaint, I know that there is a set of procedures, I know you have to do certain X, Y, Z by 45 days and blah, blah, blah. If I go to the ED, I don't know if she just, you know, puts that in the circular file and like, there's no, like, I don't know, I don't know what the-
So grievance procedure is the one.
Internal grievance procedure.
And internal change.
It's so hard, because I, we're, we're working off of sort of, you know, wounds of a failed system, right, that was in place. And so, again, it goes back to trust, but I think that at some point, if this is going to work, it has to be that you have to trust in that typical systems work. And in trying to find a solution to a system that was broken, or trying to impose things that can't fit because they don't legally fit, so you can't come to the board with things that are not board issues. And if you bring things, you know, up, the regular reporting mechanisms that are built in, they should work, and I have confidence they will work. And again, a lot of times, you can bring something forward, but you may never, ever know the result. But that doesn't mean it's not dealt with, and that's where you have to have a mechanism of trust. If over time you see that it didn't seem to be a correction for something, you know, then, then maybe you have to take another step. But there are already systems in place, and they're designed to work in, to be effective, and it's just that you have to kind of go back to saying, that was kind of, you know, an anomaly to the extent that it was because of the multiple layers it had, but it should be correcting, and we should be able to, I know it's hard when I'm saying it because trust, I totally get it, but the mechanisms are there. And because you can do everything you're doing again and saying again, but if people don't do what they need to do, no matter what new mechanisms you put in place, it's not going to work, because it still comes down to, you're modeled, and people have to follow those steps and do what they're supposed to be doing. And then it works. You get no satisfaction out of that whatsoever.
It didn't work.
I'm teasing, because it was a failed mechanism, that's what I'm saying, it was a failed system, but-
But we don't see any evidence that the mechanism has changed.
And there lies the rub, and we're summarizing the problem tonight. So that did it. We're not solving the problem yet, so.
Yeah.
But I do think that's a good example of the depth of the skepticism that you heard and you heard definitely have to do.
And I don't mean that for you personally, Mary Ann, I feel really bad, I'm not to be wounded. It's not very effective right this time. I'm sorry, no.
So, if you wouldn't mind, okay. So, another thing we heard during both sessions was the need for like a strong HR management effectiveness role, what, and, you know, again, not just the benefit side of it, but where there, you've got an HR person, very experienced, who's assuring that people are getting trained, for example, in leadership skills, et cetera. I think that was like a very, especially in the teacher meeting, but I think quite a bit in the parent one, you know, folks were very adamant, we've got to really have that role built. And another one was a matter of there was a feeling that the policy's out there, but there's not consistency of application historically, and we need to right the wrongs that are out there, whether it's certain types of reimbursements or other sorts of things, there's just this perception and possibly truth, I'm not saying possibly, but you know, for truth, that there's inconsistencies of application. And I think a lot of that is carryover from folks feel like certain people, if they were loyal, they were treated differently than if they weren't within the umbrella of the loyal groups or something. Another thing that we've all talked about here, I think, a few times during today, is this whole issue of escalation processes. You were just talking about it a moment ago. When there's a problem, how do you escalate? Whether it's for the board, whether it's to the ED, what, how, what are all these, how do we make them very crystal clear? And especially for sensitive issues where people fear, well, what if I report something, is there going to be an impact on me for reporting this? So how do we address that? And I think that, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. Having said all of these, finally, I know Diana, when she had reviewed the issues and we talked a little bit, she was saying, you know, I think one thing we, I get out of this whole thing is we just have to learn to treat each other with respect. Everybody wants that respect, and in our seats as BOT members, we may feel or perceive we're respecting everybody, but everybody doesn't feel respected, especially in the employee community and in the parent community. Another is we've got to get systems in place to not allow problems to fester. I know talking to parents, talking to teachers in those sessions, a lot of them perceive, wow, issues have been going for a long, it didn't happen overnight, it didn't just happen recently, they've been going on a long period of time, and they weren't addressed. And that in turn festered more distrust and a whole bunch of other things, and we've got to put processes in place to avoid that from happening.
Can you, can you clarify the timeline of like, what the timing is there? Like, is that a, the problem's been going on for three years or, you know, four years? Or the problem's going on for like, two months and I wish it could have gone faster?
Perfect example. So during one of the sessions, I think I mentioned, well, you know, I think Kelly came in April to speak to us, and, and somebody from the audience said, yeah, but we had been telling about problems for three years.
But we've been telling the boards.
I'm sorry? I think, I don't remember which-
The parent session, we went back to the pre, it was like a year, we were saying since- We were saying since July, twenty thirteen.
Somebody said it, in fact, beyond a year. It was like two to three years. Was it in that session? Yeah. And so now, whether that's true or not true, that's a perception that's out there. And so, I mean, I, I think the moral of the story from, from my perspective is, you know, a lot can be done to diffuse these problems ahead of time if we have better mechanisms to just be a community and have more interaction, you know, people talking, people trusting each other, et cetera. And part of that would be forums too. And part of it is putting in the right systems. And part of it is being more transparent and so forth. And part of it is, I think, you know, if people, if teachers, if, if parents, both of them, I, I've been clearly stated in both sessions, we don't always feel like we're stakeholders. So, so somehow, some of us are sending signals that, that they aren't stakeholders, right? And we need to be sensitive to that.
And I think we need to kind of create a new reality moving forward because we're never gonna untangle what happened.
Yep.
And, I mean, what happened, it doesn't even matter what really happened because you've got perception on top of perception. So this, you know, astounding kind of echo chamber of cascading effects. And whether the original set of facts was correct or not, couldn't possibly matter less at this point. And I think, you know, the way we do it is like we start acting differently. We say what we're gonna do differently and then we keep reminding ourselves and our audiences, this is what we're doing, this is why we're doing it. The next time it comes up, we're gonna do it again. This is how it's gonna be. And I think, my sense is that if we do that, that's, that's what's gonna turn it around over time. Because people do. I mean, they, you could tell, they responded. All the anger was there, but when you said, you know, when Craig said what, what he just said, you know, you can almost feel a sigh of relief coming out of it. You know, when we were with them and said, yeah, that was awful and it shouldn't have happened. Thank you. So just doing that gives us a great start. I think we have to keep at it and keep plugging at it. It's a little disappointing that that by itself doesn't fix it. Because people think, okay, now can we move on? Well, no, you know, we still gotta build a new reality.
And, you know, Chris, you mentioned that attending that session, seeing the emotion and so forth, it gave you a different perspective.
It did.
And I think that's why it's really important over the next few months for us to have those types of forums. And not necessarily all board members attending, but a few per forum. I think it will give insight into, I think it will be healing as an act. But, but it'll also give us better insight into what people are feeling. Teachers and, and parents in terms of the past. And I, I think it'll help then for us to be more sensitive, for us to think a second time about how do we be maybe more transparent or how will others perceive what we're doing? And, and I think it'll help to move things forward. So with that, I don't know if...
These little cards we can put in our wallets and pockets.
Anybody have any more comments to add?
Any selection?
If, if I could just say one thing though, we do need to move on to having a new task force to do, start the implementation with admin representation and board representation. And essentially, I think the assessment task force, their work is down at this point. And so kind of procedurally, how do we go about assembling that task force?
Craig can just disassemble it.
So I think we first say thank you to the investigation task force. You guys did a great job. The members that aren't here that were involved as well, Scott. So a lot of hard work, a lot of painful scars that kind of get unlined. But it feels like we have a place to start. And a big long list of things to figure out which are most important to do. So I think if we can just suggest that that task force is disbanded and now we take all the willing volunteers to participate in the implementation task force.
So, so with that, I, I am willing to volunteer to join the implementation task force.
Did you say as well, Chris? That's great.
I am, I am also, I am, I'm here because I'm committed to make things better and not just sit back here and complain. So I don't know if it is appropriate for me to participate in that, but if, if it is, then I would love to. And if it's not, I'm happy to step back.
Yeah. I think it's appropriate.
Yeah, I think it's very...
Okay. So we have three, which is kind of what we need to get started. And there'll be admin joining and then the task force has to figure out who else needs to join, whether it's parents or teachers or kids or whatever.
Well, that you officially won very honor on this task force, no matter what.
Yeah, we're assuming she's a leader.
Yeah, I'm assuming.
Yeah. Okay. So that makes it four officially. And then if you all wanna organize and start thinking about, you know, how we get started, that'd be great.
If I could just make one comment, you, you thank the task force. I, I just would like to also mention, big thanks to the support of the administration, current administration in this effort, and to all the teachers and who participated, or employees in general who participated and were very honest and open in terms of what was going on with, with the third-party assessment team. And then also to all the employees and the parents who joined last week. They were very open, very honest and I, it was, it was very important. So thank you.
And, and to Diana Hammer too, she was, she was great from our perspective. I don't know where you found her or who found her, but I know she's not here right now, but she was great.
Okay. Many miles in front of us in terms of the implementation task force. Our next item for this evening will be the governance committee.
Yeah. So a couple of items to cover. One is the SMART goal for our intern ED. And these were designed, Mary Ann drafted it before, the areas that we talked about. And she drafted SMART goals, so they'd be measurable goals. We talked about it, it's governance. The governance committee provided feedback. And this is the revised motion that incorporated all of the governance committee feedback. So these were circulated to board members a couple of days ago. But the idea, so one big piece of it was to get clear these different defining terms on the nomenclature that, that is being used, which is moving more towards not the nomenclature that we have used at the board in the past, but more what, what is appropriate for school. So I just wanna, I, I don't wanna go through each of these briefly because we still have other things to go through. I, I, did everyone have a chance to review these at least briefly or you can review them now?
I reviewed them. I thought they were awfully ambitious.
I think in some cases, what, we, we had that conversation that they were really ambitious.
Yeah.
I think in some cases, she felt very strongly that you need to at least shoot for something.
Okay.
And right, in some of these cases, we don't know what the baseline is because we've never had a goal before. And so having a goal that's, you know, sort of reach for the moon, to see where you can be, is probably the right place to start as opposed to sort of setting goals that you know you can achieve, you know, bare minimum.
Not meeting the moon won't be judged a failure.
Exactly, right. It's not going to be. You know, if she gets forty-nine percent of the faculty, it's gonna be pretty darn good. These are not, you know, binary goals by any means. So I just wanted to check the governance committee members just to make sure that they're okay with all of this.
Yeah, we added budget accountability.
Right, we, there was an added in one for budget accountability. Oh, that, that budget one shouldn't say measure, be assertive. But did it, no, that definitely was not right. I think, who, probably entitled, cut case for the next time. Take a poll and see if we think we're meeting the budget. Yeah. Actually, I, I might like it that way. I think I'm gonna run my household that way.
You know, I did wonder about that.
Yeah, that was a, that, I noticed it was folding and just didn't copy paste. Yeah, exactly. I noticed that after I sent it out to everyone, I was like, oh, whoops. There's a, yeah. But other than that, I don't, I, I think this is what the committee agreed to and that she agreed to. And our process is that we do have an interim check-in with the ED partway through the year. And we can talk about when we do that, but that, we'll, we'll certainly check in with her partway through. This in general, the close-up. Very ambitious of her appearance.
All right, thank you for the defining terms because we were quite confused.
Right, that's actually what we...
We spent, we spent at least a third of our time discussing what the definition of...
Call me when you're, in your session. But just so you know, these are, are terms that also align with, you know, educator evaluation. So as you go into the negotiation process as well, these are the kind of terms that would be defined.
Which is very helpful for our...
Regarding interim check-ins, with one, I was very, very impressed with them. Our ambitions were really, really good. The one thing that I think we do need to address is, the interim check-in should be more in terms of milestones and, you know, are we getting there or not? Hey, are you gonna succeed at the end of the year? A lot of these things are very good at telling you after the fact whether you did it or not, but not so good at helping along the way. And I think that kind of sense of are we really making progress is what we didn't have.
So would it be appropriate at whatever designated points you determine to kind of take each of these and, you know, put the steps that have, that have taken place so that you kind of see how the progress is moving for each of these particular goals?
I would think, and particularly one that if there are inflection points and decision points with, you know, here's what we're doing, is it working? Like, you know, to, to achieve a seventy-five percent satisfaction rate, you're gonna do a whole long list of things and you're gonna be doing all kinds of things that you can see, oh, is this working well? No.
Something tells me you're gonna tell me.
So you're asking for the tactics that need to be evidenced?
No, not now, but I, I think some, some milestones, appropriate, you know, milestones that show progress that also allow you to be accountable to us for interim stuff. Because we went from everything was swell to disaster last year.
So along those lines, so, you know, kind of thinking about how sometimes some things are managed. They, they have some, I don't wanna go to the, to an extreme, but, you know, they have a dashboard. And, you know, basically a things on track. So we don't need necessarily input on, or details on how each thing is being implemented every single period we review. But kind of a dashboard view of is progress being made, everything's kind of green. And if there are things that are yellow or red, well, then let's talk about that.
Yes, more green, yellow, red.
And for these goals, a lot of them are measured through the survey. So there's not, there's a lot, not a lot of interim, it's not a fair checkpoint. But I'd suggest, given, given that most of the goals end at May thirtieth, there's, there's a few that are June thirtieth, a few that are March. At least like half, halfway between there and now is around March first. Or whatever the meeting is around there. Like the, halfway between now and the endpoint. Just trying to have a...
February.
Yeah, so if we did the February bot meeting or the February governance meeting.
Governance, yeah.
Probably, no, we do governance. We did like the February governance meeting as the, as the checkpoint. And then we would report it out at the February or March board meeting, depending on what time it is.
I think what we did last year was, I mean, was, we did a mid-cycle assessment, right?
Yeah, we did the mid-cycle assessment. We did it in December, I think.
But it didn't work.
We did it before Jan, we did it before that January planning.
We did it before the January planning made it, the mid-cycle assessment.
And it wasn't the expectation that you'd get to seventy-five percent.
By any means.
But it was more, these are the things I'm doing to make sure we'll get to seventy-five percent.
And there were also adjustments. There were a few minor adjustments that were made.
And in some major...
But that didn't, but that didn't, honestly, that didn't work. That previous evaluation process didn't work.
Well, we didn't do the evaluation.
Right, we never got to the evaluation, but even the fact that, the fact that in, when we did the interim checkpoint, we didn't see any major indicators of problems.
Well, we didn't, it wasn't in the goal, climate wasn't in the goal.
Right, right. I mean, it may be that we were measuring the wrong things, but...
Well, no, I don't think we were measuring the wrong things. Climate wasn't in the goals. I mean, it just wasn't, it wasn't focused, right? I mean, that's part of the job. So you're right, I mean, it, it didn't catch that. But I'm not sure that was, this, this system is intended to catch that.
Right, right.
The survey system is intended to catch that.
So it may help to know that with, with, I believe, from my perspective, that all things that even those that have a survey component to them, that there'll be other, you know, qualitative mechanisms that are round the way. Through, through, you know, faculty meetings and forums that I, you know, plan on continuing with the, with the staff that, you know, I'll get a lot of answers to things and have progress. And again, I sort of said it jokingly before, but I believe, I, we're going to hear now.
Yeah.
And, and so I think that that will, you know, what I hope we do, be an indicator, right?
Yeah. And I, and I do like the green, yellow, red concept so we can be really focused on those areas that are still being challenged and sense, and, you know, relax, focus on the problems and not on just equal, equal attention on each point. All right. I'd like to, do we need to make a motion to acquit these or do we accept them or do we dispute?
Please.
No, I don't think we need to.
We accept them.
Yeah, we just accept them as a word, right? So we accept them.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Great. The second thing to cover is just an update on board recruiting. And let's start with the board recruiting process. Like this is the same process as last year, we've made one tweak. So, and part of the reason for doing this is so that we can have the process and then publish this. And so this is last year's process with just the markup of what we've changed. And so the, the process has always been, you know, we've got this, this first piece, which is what we're gonna do today, agree on what we're looking for for this next year and what we're recruiting for. I can say that last year we were recruiting for development, we were recruiting for education, we were recruiting for HR, we were recruiting for finance, we were recruiting for facilities. So those were the areas that we were looking for last year.
Can we put this up on the website?
Yes, that's what I was gonna say. And that's why, part of the reason of doing this is so that we can have this up there next year so people know what it actually is. The recruiting task force, which is comprised of three members of the board, is, is a task force that reports into the governance committee. And that task force inner, does the initial screen and sort of interviews on pre-qualified candidates. And does some basic searches. At that point, particularly if, if they don't know the school, they're requested to come to committee meetings and to come to board meetings, so during that part. So they can at least get to know what the school is like. The next stage then goes to broader board participation in, in interviews and particularly the likely committee chair, that, that, for whatever committee that person will be on. They, they come to meet the ED, they get to join the school. We do the query checks at that point. And what we're proposing to add is that they actually come to a governance committee meeting and that more people can come and sort of ask questions at that time. What we wanted to avoid, in the past, we had a majority of the board members meet them. As we get to have more people, that's just, that's not despot. That process would be way too long. We had to schedule one-on-one interviews with, now we've got eight majority of the board members. So we added this governance committee step because there's a lot of people at that meeting, generally a lot of board members that are there, not just governance committees, but often we have attendance with by other board members. And if people know that that's on the agenda, then other board members who want to meet them, if they can attend that meeting, they can test them. That's, that's what we're proposing to ask.
And also an opportunity for the board to...
It's also, it's ability to, right.
Have visibility to candidates and questions. Prior to the candidate coming and presenting.
So adding that step really, prior to the next board meeting where the governance officially does the nomination. And at that point, yes, the candidates introduce themselves, but at that point, they've met those people. So that's what we're proposing to accomplish in the process.
Is that it?
That's it. Okay. And then...
So given this is a process, do we need to vote or?
No, we don't need to vote. Yes, I wanna review the new, I just wanna mention that there's also role description and performance expectations of all new board members, which I'm going to also, it's included as part of our board package, so that'll also come on the web after. We're proposing no changes to that. So this is, oh, not that one. The desired candidate profile. So this is the, what we've discussed that we need to really recruit for. First of all, I would say that in this past year, all the board members that we brought on were non-parents. And that was because last year we were in a position of having an all-parent board and we wanted to move more towards more appropriate governance procedures where we had third-party... and we wanted to move more towards more appropriate governance procedures where we had third parties that are, were added, and we had three. So, we moved in that direction. We would still like to move a little bit further. I think we need to talk about at some point what the desired board composition is, but we would like to target at least not, to increase non-parents to fifty percent of the at-large trustees. So, trying to move in that direction. So, it's not, so I'd say that means we're, we consider parents again, but we really want to still keep a lot of non-parents in the mix, right? And then the professional experience, the qualities are the same. The professional experience, HR and organizational balance is really a key, high, is probably number one. Education is number two, and education is broken out into two areas. One, which is specifically a policy development. I think that part of the difficulty last year in, in recruiting for education is that the people that we got really, who are interested in the board, were interested in curriculum development. They loved Amsen thought, wow, this is great and I want to be involved in helping to develop the curriculum. And that's not actually the job of the board. The board's job is to set the policies and to understand curriculum policy and the school administration develops the curriculum. So, that distinction.
And to approve.
And approve, right, but it's not to develop the curriculum. So, I certainly noticed, because I was doing a lot of those initial screens, that many people came in and when they realized that, you know, that was what the role was, they weren't interested.
Pauline, can, I, can, is this recruiting sort of profile, is this sort of out there in the community? Like, can anybody say, hey, I have a good idea for a board member for you?
Yeah. I mean, it hasn't been out there. We've talked about it at board meetings, so you'd have to dig to look for it. If people were at board meetings and saw it, it's been out there, but it's not, but we will have this on the web.
Okay, yeah, because I feel like some of the sort of feeling is like, that phrase, the self-selecting board. So, if people felt like, even if they had an input in just recommending people, that that might.
Anybody could come to, to, I mean, it's actually, well, it's probably not over there. It, it does go through the pre-check, so we'll sit on there how they can actually do that. I mean, we think good about moving people through, so it's not like the, I'm not sure that we've ever said, oh, this is just a terrible fit, you know, let me just.
I think one thing that you might not have mentioned is that you're recruiting on, you're actually putting this out there in other places, right?
Right, so part of the lead feed profile is that once we agree that this is what we're looking at, then the task force of governance sort of figure out, okay, where do we go and find these people? And last year, we did. We put it out in, you know, very specific areas, there's a whole process of, of how are you reaching those people? And I'd say all of our new board members and the, the candidates we have in the pipeline came through. And they're not really one venue. I mean, they came from all these different tactics. So, that outreach definitely was helpful, but it's been posted in a couple of places.
It might be helpful to get that, just that statement out to the public too. How do we find these board members?
Yeah. It's generally been a couple of minutes, so. So, we'll get those out, then it'll be easier to find, right, when we have that out there. And so, people know, you know, there is a board process and how.
Yeah, it's not just people selecting their friends and brothers.
It's not at all. We didn't know we had these people.
Yeah, I'm just saying that I, I think that that's a perception.
Yeah. No, we actually did it there, right?
And.
We thought so. Right, and they're great, so. And then, so we still do need real estate facilities, accounting, finance and development depth, but our, emphasis on those top three. So, that's just what I wanted to put out there. Any comments on these? Do you think we hit anything? We are going to hopefully be able to be in the process of bringing a few more on by the end of the year. I think that was it for governance committee. We do have to approve the contract for the former EDD because we never voted on that, no committee. So, what I want to cover then is what those contract terms were. We had a, we had talked about it in executive session and we were in negotiations with a salary of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the year. An additional four thousand dollars for a office in the city of Marlboro. Offsite or back in Amso. A, but then, well, actually, how do we do this? Do we end up with one or two contracts? We ended up with two.
One contract.
It was one contract at the end, okay. So, the, there was a termination date. What termination date was now?
September.
But what, yeah. Whatever that date was, or we had that termination date, whenever the announcement went out, that's what it was.
But I think we would just, as more, I think we would just approve the contract.
Contract terms.
The contract terms, which was one year and fifty thousand dollars.
It was one year, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars plus four thousand for the, for the offsite.
Which we never incurred.
Which we never incurred because that was still part of it.
That never was a contract.
A severance payment of sixty-five thousand dollars, which represented four and a half months, which is halfway between what typical superintendents get, either three or six months in their contract. That's really what the contract was.
I mean, that is, I guess I could, could be put in there as, that was a. That was, that was just a separation agreement. I don't even know that qualifies, but either way.
Yeah, I hope it wasn't there.
I think we just need to.
Only we need to vote on that one. We need to vote on the hundred and fifty thousand dollar annual salary was the contract that was out there. Yeah, so it's kind of, kind of moot. I mean, I'll make a motion that, that, that that was the, you know, the contract terms that we contemplated.
Yep.
Is there a second?
I'm second.
Okay. Uh, Chris seconded. Did he beat you?
Oh, sorry.
We're, we're voting on the contract terms that had been on.
Chris.
Chris.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes.
I believe, Jessica, you're exceeding?
I don't think I'm allowed to vote on that.
Right. Abstentions?
Oh, sorry.
One abstention. She's not abstaining, actually. She, no.
I can't recuse myself.
Accused, yeah. Okay. Is there any other business? Do we, do we have an update from education committee or fundraise?
So, education committee, we never circled back to the surveys. I'm gonna use my time to circle back to the surveys.
You're limited time.
Are we having a parent survey?
Yes, yes.
Are we having a parent survey that no comment?
No. Put the comments in.
We're putting the comments in.
It doesn't, it doesn't send the right message, I can totally agree with this, but.
What we'll have to do is just be really careful and.
You can get a screen.
They're public and so do not.
Yeah, above, if you don't mind, above the comment section, say, please do not mention any names. Re-text them.
Or identifying.
I cannot promise that that will not happen.
Right.
But I mean, even in the.
I believe there are.
Even in the principal search committee, that they were sending it just to me and, and it was just more about, you know, if someone's gonna select you and I don't want her to know who you are, there were still some things that were trying to identify.
Can you put something in there, this, this information may become public, do not put anything identifying?
Information is public.
It always is.
Yeah, so, survey with open comments.
Yeah.
Wait a second, didn't we just say the survey was gonna be done by administration, they were gonna redact whatever it was and give up?
That's where.
Yeah.
That's what I'm asking.
We still don't want the names.
So, this may become public.
We still don't want the names, but.
Yeah.
We don't.
It could become public.
We're not gonna get the name no matter what.
If somebody sues and they, you know.
Survey with open comment via administration.
Yes.
So, so administration is.
The administration is going to redact any names in what they send to us. It would still be, you know, subject to a public.
Yeah, it's a public request.
Anything in the schools. We're not gonna ask for them.
Yeah, we're not gonna ask.
We're gonna tell them we don't want it.
Well, if we put that disclaimer, it may not be worth it.
If they can't understand that, then we're gonna discount the survey.
So, I would ask anybody who has come on the family survey to please send them to me and then I will send the final survey with Dr. Demola.
And so, I'd also like to request that Melissa to look into the, these other, the third-party surveys so that we can.
Student survey next on my list because during ed committee.
Okay.
How do we want to handle the student survey? All we did in ed committee is we identified our objectives. And we talked about separating it out into two surveys that really dealt with kind of that stress level, separate from like the academic, I guess academic every day, extracurricular, so that, you know, they're long surveys and we really need to keep our focus focused.
Is the student survey a coming to the board or the student survey is coming to the school? Because the board is not.
The, the stress one, I, I feel like that's sort of, that's just a school-related thing that comes along with part of our wellness, you know, programs and so on, we're kind of focused on. Things that you might be trying to determine related to culture or whatever is kind of a board thing. But for us, just in terms of our educational process, that's what we want to do with the, with the survey related to one of us.
So, we sent out, I mean, we talked about the two separate surveys. We worked two different buckets and identified objectives. There's like six or seven here, maybe seven here, for the survey that, that we're used to, that would come in the fall. And I'm not sure, we didn't look at questions, we just talked about what we felt were some good objectives for the survey.
For the student survey.
For the student survey, and everybody, I think that board with the ed committee, it's everybody, so you have an opportunity to look at it. And maybe, you know, maybe it's something that we ask the administration to drive based on those objectives that were identified by the ed committee, which is a group of, you know, parents, faculty, board members, administration.
Can I ask, in terms of the stress survey, just like you had found those third, those third parties, does anything like that exist?
It, it, some of them ask those questions, but not, I think, to the level that Dr. Demola wants to, to, to kind of dive into it. But it is about school climate, so, you know, if you're stressed or you feel bullied, it's, it's part of it, you feel safe, right? That's part of being in a good school environment, so that, some of those questions are there, but I'm sure there are other tools out there that dive in a little bit.
The, the reason I ask is because one of the, the values of third party is also benchmarking, which somebody else mentioned earlier. And I think that's really helpful because obviously one of minimize stress levels, but it's also just good to see how we compare. So, again, I just throw out, if you know, if we have that opportunity for third party, a third-party stress survey, that's great. Or if at least some of those questions are on the other survey or whatever, so we can get some benchmarking done, I think that's helpful.
So, I would say if, for that, we can look at the third-party solutions that will be for our survey to see if there's some questions that I would, I would actually ask the administration to drive, find a tool that would be specific to those areas.
Is there another matter?
So, what is our goal as a board for the student survey?
Yeah, that's kind of, that's why I'm having difficulty.
I'm, I'm struggling. I'm struggling about where the governance or policy, other, other basic governance and policy.
Is it part of our, it's, it's not part of the accountability plan in terms of our stateful satisfaction levels?
I don't think so.
Like its family and its parents and.
So, I mean, from our perspective, I mean, the first objective, are the students prepared to be successful? I think that's important.
Our student's not part of the family? And we're not serving that as part of the family? We can do a little Venn diagrams here, but I think if this is a family, that students are part of that family. And if the parents are the ones that are filling this out, we're not necessarily getting that, that piece of the puzzle. Seems to me like they're one of our constituents.
I don't think we should advance the student survey. We should be doing.
I was also gonna say, we already have one in place, right?
It's a question.
To just have kind of clean it up. Yeah, clean it up and maybe separate stress or wellness factors out and maybe if you want to do it into two different things and maybe, you know, tweak them a little bit, but we, I feel like we have a starting point. So, they go.
Stress levels is a, administration.
That is, that's what I said, that was separate.
Not, not part of the board-driven.
We've, we've separated that.
Okay, I, I was hearing that it was still.
No, we separated and I, and I, I guess.
It's something that I, I think we care about as a board, but I think we're acknowledging that it's going to be addressed through a different channel. So, it's gonna be addressed by a different channel, let's carve that out of the existing student survey.
And launch it.
Launch it, make it happen.
So, I, I, my assumption is that, you know, we can drive through the ed committee or we can drive it another way.
Be great for the ed.
And just to reiterate, we're very concerned about stress, so we want some sort of information sooner rather than later on that. Let's not spend three months studying a survey. Let's get something which is better than the information that we have right now in order to that process.
And I will look at the third-party solutions. So, that was your last question.
Anything else from the education committee?
Um, no.
Okay. Thank you very much. Fundraising, did you have anything with?
Maybe next week.
Excellent, thank you very much. Anything with the agenda for next week, for next month? What I am, what I am gonna do next month is we're not gonna have four-hour board meetings anymore. So, if you wanted some, we're not gonna do it. I'm gonna limit the agenda. That's really one of the chair's only responsibilities is build the agenda like this. So, we're not gonna have any of these meetings. We're gonna really need to talk about how to plan your, your peace needs as well as everybody else so we can manage our agenda to a balanced basis. And then I don't think it's fair for you all to be here beyond ten o'clock. All right, well, I would say that we take a roll call vote. We have a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss strategies with respect to collective bargaining. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing collective, collective argument and noting that this is, I'm sure this is a part of the, that's, that's being that this is not, not appropriate. It's not, not, not appropriate, not appropriate to market. It's not.
Decrimental.
It's detrimental to have the discussion of all the stuff.
Okay, all right, and is there a second? Can I see that for Melissa? We'll go to a roll call vote very quickly. Chris?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Pauline?
Yes.
And Melissa? Our vote is unanimous and.
Melissa, a little abstain over two seconds.
Abstain overseas or whatever you need me to do, aren't you?
Thank you, I think. All right.
Or yes, yeah, go ahead. She sums up with more meaning. I'll vote yes. Luca, it's a great idea. Yeah, it's a great idea. I think you should have a great time in there.
You know, it came.